Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town Council Work Session of September 18th, 2017. Before we start the meeting, considering your letter received by the EDA, I would like a member of council to wish to make a motion to amend the agenda to add a discussion regarding the afternoon appeal.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that the regularly scheduled Town Council Work Session Agenda of Monday, September 18th, 2017 be amended to include to hear the appeal of the Board of Architectural Review Decision of September 12th, 2017 regarding the application for demolition of the acting in.
You have a motion, you have a second? Motion's second, any discussion? Ms. Berry, go ahead.
Councilman Connelly.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie.
Yes.
Councilman Mazza.
Yes.
Councilman Seelaw.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Tewa.
Yes. Okay, that will be item number seven. Okay, we have a closed session scheduled for the end of the meeting, but our hosts are from out of town and council feels that it would better serve them to move them to the first agenda item. And if everybody would please bear with us, John, would you lead us into closed so we can take care of item number six?
Mr. Mayor, with the council convening, go into closed meeting for the purpose of discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerers. The discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 29 of the Code of Virginia.
Second. We have a motion section, any discussion? Ms. Berry.
Councilman Connelly.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie.
Yes.
Councilman Mazza.
Yes.
Councilman Seelaw.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Tewa.
Okay, will we, you guys go ahead. For the most part, our meeting consists of other, myself, Gene, and Town Manager, Director of Finance. Let's move number seven that we added to the EDA. We have Jennifer McDonald and Dan Whitten from the county for the EDA. Would you guys like to come up and let us hear something about your appeal? Why are you appealing? I know it might caught you off guard, but...
He wants to stand somewhere.
Yeah, just right there is fine, wherever you'd like, be comfortable, whatever you'd like.
So, we had sent a letter to council and to the Board of Architectural Review appealing the decision of the Board of Architectural Review denying our request to demo that property. We still feel that demolition is the best way to go for mode developers, so we had sent a letter to you guys hoping that we can make this appeal to you to keep our application of demolishing that building in place so that mode developers can continue to live the project as presented.
Dan, do you have anything to add?
To council and to Board of Architectural Review.
No, we just basically followed all the procedural requirements for the appeal. We feel the appeal is proper, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. Mode was not able to be present tonight. We filed the appeal on Friday, and this was the next meeting, so it was kind of a short turnaround when they weren't able to be present.
Yeah, that's understandable.
But we'd be happy to answer any questions, and if there's any questions we can't answer, we can get information from the past several.
Well, I've asked council through an email to review Mr. McCool's recording of all the VAR meetings, and they have also been sent all the minutes to the EDA, or not the EDA, but the VAR minutes. Is there any questions tonight, gentlemen, that you would like to ask?
No questions, those are here. We're going to get something else from these. We are 100% proud that we don't have to do any public hearings.
No public hearings, sir.
Regular council.
No, sir, it will come before council on the 25th of September.
I believe that we go ahead and put it on the agenda.
Anybody else?
Sorry.
Okay. And if you haven't watched the videos, please watch them so you'll be in case if anybody wants to ask questions. And Joe, when you put the motion out there for council to decide on, put it for or against, make the double motion. Thank y'all for coming in.
Thanks.
If there's any information you want to bring to the next meeting, just...
We'll email you and...
We can bring that right.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
All right, let's go back to the proposed amendment for the Town Code 142-20 banner poles. Town Manager.
Mr. Mayor and council, this is another one of those items where I'm trying to improve the process and the efficiency. Back in 2012, council codified the banner pole policy, and since then, we've seen a significant increase in utilization of both banner locations, one on John Marshall as well as here on North Royal, and we have some recommendations for some changes to the policy. And I'll go through them, there are six here. Number one is to allow the Town Manager to designate staff to approve the applications, to streamline the process. There's no reason why this application should come to the Town Manager. We'd like to remove the application information from the code so that we can update it as we see fit moving forward, make it more of a living document instead of a document that's basically codified and hard to adjust. We'd like to, item number three, we'd like to add the town sponsored events to the display priority for, due to the fact that we're getting a lot of participation for the banner locations, we wanted to add town sponsored events as a priority on the list of placement. We want to also change the request of banner locations for only one location. What we've noticed over the past several years is that a organization will secure both spots and eliminate an opportunity for somebody else to utilize those spots as well. So this is just allow everybody to have more organizations than opportunity to get the prime times, which seem to be in the spring and the fall. And number five is also with that, not allowing banners to move from one location to another without a week in between. Therefore, that reduces our labor time of sending somebody out there to remove a banner and then go over and have to set up again to install it at another location. So these are just part of the process that I've been going through, of all the processes and improving them, streamlining them. I'll answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions, or does anybody feel that there's a need to keep it the same or let Joe move forward with streamlining?
Joe, is this, do we do this free gratis, don't we?
Yes, we do.
We don't charge anybody.
We don't charge.
So theoretically, then, if I had two banners and I wanted them up, then before we could request them, they'd put up the same day, the same week, or whenever, at both locations. So that's one of the, which I have to agree with, that that needs to be changed entirely. And going back to the, I'm going to go back to the one in regards to the town events, now does that include the ones that we participate in or just the ones that we do the 100%? Like the Chamber, them wanting to put up their festival leaves and all that, do they get top priority or do they do like anyone else?
All right, the code states that the ones, the vendors or the organizations that have been doing it for years past have the priority for the first 14 days of the year. So what we do is we don't take reservations until January 1st. So the events such as the festival leaves and stuff like that, they have 14 days to get their priority, to be on the priority, to get their, secure their dates. And then after that, it opens up to everybody. So what we're trying to do now is just kind of open it up and restrict it where they can't secure both spots at the same week.
Very time consuming, I'm sure. What about Jake?
Would if, would if they, somebody wants to put up two banners and their current spots aren't held at either locations that they want, like there's availability, in other words?
All right, those, yeah, we can make those accommodations if those decisions would have to be made a week or two prior to the actual installation, but, and we have done that before as well.
Okay. I particularly like that you pushed this down to designees rather than yourself. I appreciate you doing that. Bill?
Has it been any consideration for other, because you've got one going north to south and one east to west? I see other opportunities to double. Has anything, has anyone or looked into another east-west and another north-south?
No, we haven't looked at any other locations. I know that in the past year, we've kind of looked at some other alternatives besides hanging actual physical banners, you know? I know we don't want to talk about flashing rolling signs, but, you know, we've looked at some of those options as well, but no, to answer your question, Bill, no, we haven't looked at any other locations yet.
There are some other options.
Right. And that investment to install another banner location, you're probably looking at an investment of probably about $10,000 for the poles themselves to be specifically designed, engineered, engineered, designed, and manufactured with stainless steel.
Is there anything we can do with that location on John Marshall Highway? It's just a block of concrete with a green pole sticking out the middle of it. I mean, it's kind of something about.
Okay.
Anybody else? Move forward, Joe.
Thank you.
Will that be, we've got to advertise it.
Does that have to be advertised or is that just a code change? Yep, it'll have to be advertised. This will be probably not on your duty until October.
All right, let's do the budget amendment for the Lee Trun Parkway, Director of Finance.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
So, just a kind of a housekeeping item, more or less, the board, the Lee Trun Parkway, council had done, approved a budget amendment a few years ago there for $12.3 million. That it only included construction for as far as branch highways. I'm going to be coming back to council with a budget amendment for about $586,000. It may increase there to cover the last and final invoices from the engineering services and a couple of other items, just to wrap up Lee Trun Parkway. No true expense for the town, I mean, we will be paying out the money, but the revenue will be offset from the debt service payment coming from Warren County and also from Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles, the revenue sharing program. So it's not true it's bound for the town.
What was those additions due to change orders?
Really, the, not really change orders so much, it's the, like I said, the engineering services wasn't included in that $12.3 million ticket. Yeah, the $12.3 was just for branch highways.
I saw that, I was kind of surprised when I saw it.
And it has to filter through the town in order to get the revenue. Any questions?
If I'm agenda, Joe, please.
I'd like to have it placed on a regular agenda.
Regular, correct.
Yes, on a, it's in.
Yes, sir.
Well, you're talking that kind of money, people want to know where it goes. That's absolutely correct. All right, let's go with curb and gutter assessment review. We kind of put your name on there, Gene.
I noticed that, I don't know how it goes.
But we'll share that between yourself and myself and Seelaw.
I mean, I'll be glad to explain it.
Would you please, unless Joe's going to do it?
No, I...
Well, you know, this is something, when I was working, we had it all the time I was here, and we would put people on the list, and at the time, when I started, it was $3 a foot, and then we changed it later to $12 a foot in 2001 or '02 when I was under council, and $3, $3.50 a square foot for the household aprons and sidewalks. And it was working very well, and we had a large number of people that wanted curb and guttering. And though you sent that time, there's hardly none, because when I was the mayor, the council agreed to just go ahead and eliminate that ordinance completely, and so it went down to where there was no curb and gutter being installed by the town in regards to paying the assessment fees. And I guess it's been that way ever since. I personally, and I wasn't really the one who brought this up, but being a little bit more about it, knowing a little more about it, I would like to see us go back to the assessment that we charged, but first, I'd like to see us find out how much the actual cost is, because what we always did before was 50% of whatever the cost would have been. If it was $24, we charged $12. If it was $6, we charged $3 for the square footage, and that gave the property owners incentive, they gave us incentives. And we had, also, we had three or four ways to pay for it, cash, installments, whatever, whatever, and I'm not sure what they were at this time, but I'd like to just go back pretty close to what we had originally and go ahead and try to implement this and get it back on the books so that we can get people that wants curb and guttering and it's not so outlandish costly that we share in the cost, but let the people decide if they do want it, and they have the opportunity for the town to have it installed, or we install it with their own personal people, with their maintenance group.
Bill?
As a short-term councilman, I saw this very early. I installed curb and gutter in front of my house. Not only did I pay for the curb and gutter, but I paid for the extension of all asphalt onto whatever asphalt was there. So for a cost of about, front of my house was about $17,000. That wasn't the prime mover, though, that when I got on council, what I was finding was most houses going in, come in and ask for a waiver, well, we don't want sidewalks, or we don't want curb and gutter. And previous council were waiving that. So now you've got a house that has no curb and gutter, you have a house that does, so where does the problem fall? Right here, sometime down the road, when there is a water issue or erosion problem, it comes back to the council. Now where the town has to go in and put curb and gutter in to take care of a problem. So my concern is that the existing homes really have no outlet other than going to private concerns and getting it installed. Now, what really irritated this man was I even put the asphalt in for the street. So that seemed to be a little too much, and I hope going forward that we will not waver when it comes to putting curb and gutter in any new residence in this town. So that was probably the driving force, was looking around at the number of houses that do not have curb and gutter, that really need them. And the other factor is trying to get, rather than us worrying about it later down the road, it should be accomplished when a house is built. And the second factor was, how do we take care of these problem areas now? That's my driving force.
John?
My question's for Gene, because you have the experience and the knowledge on this. When curb and gutter is in, how much longer does the asphalt that we've laid last than where it isn't?
If you've got a street that's got asphalt completely on both sides, most of the time you'll get additional five to eight, maybe 10 years, depending on the traffic patterns, because it doesn't ravel off on the edges where you have, go back and repatch. Happy Creek Road's a good example, everybody's seen that down Happy Creek. It's patch after patch after patch because there's no curb and guttering, doesn't hold the asphalt, so it just ravels out and goes out into the gutter pad, and it'll save a lot of money in repairs in the future. And I'd like to even, I mean, this isn't part of the ordinance I'm doing, but talking about it, what I'd like to see us do is also go back and, when we do the asphalt in Royal every year, look at the streets we're going to do that needs it. And if there's two or three spots in there that needs to be asphalted, I mean, curb and gutter placed there, we need to go and talk to those property owners and be able to get them on that assessment list so that we can get the whole street done at the same time and not just a piecemeal here and a piecemeal here and a piecemeal over here. And I think we'll have a better look in town and our subdivisions if we can do it under those, under those conditions.
Anyone else?
Well, yeah, while I'm on the whole ramble of the case, now, we also need to know that, and Doug, you, I'm sure you're going to be into this, because we've got to research all the titles and we've got to get an assessment, and these will go into the tax record, go into the courthouse as a lien on people's property when they come in and they don't pay it in full. So I want the council to be aware of that, that, you know, if we do the assessments and we have a list of, say, 25 people, then their name, if they don't pay, say, 100% of the full payment, and they'll be, it'll go in as an assessment against that real estate. And when that property is sold, and that will be brought forward in the sale to make up the difference with the curb and gutter.
Joe, what are we going to do? We going to do any more work sessions, or you want to put it on the...
Yeah, let us, let staff pull together.
Around October.
A draft in ordinance, we'll get the pricing, because that's a very important part of this. And we'll bring it back in October when we got everything, as a draft ordinance with the cost, and we'll have another work session on it, probably tune it before taking it to public.
Sure. Yeah, we're losing a meeting, I think, October 2nd.
We'll be losing one in October.
Yeah, so we've really got a lot, we've had a lot on our plate this year, let me tell you. All right, moving forward on that. Okay, next one is discussion for the possible use of funds collected from the sale of the former police department. Mayor Thark, WB. Months ago, we had, the academy came in and wanted us to forgive them to not put in any sidewalks and some lighting. We were kind of in a corner that there wasn't any sidewalks out there, so why would they want to put sidewalks in and not lead anywhere other than to the academy? So while we were in the process, we received some letters from, I think one was Christians College, no, not Christians, Seaton School, and some other people out there that are using the roadway to their walking. Bids were kind of, drove, we came up with $245,000 to complete the curb and the sidewalks and the lighting, the lighting to be done in the house. We have about $240,000 left over from the police department, and Progress Drive would definitely benefit from it, and I think there's still people out there that want it, and then when we put ours in, that would trigger the academy to put theirs in, so we would have probably twice the walking distances that we would have if we just had our own.
Ms. Berry, does that go against what we just agreed to put on the agenda for approval?
No, that's for 50/50 in future.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, I think it ought to be done in the same offices. I just don't think that we ought to go out and do a complete road and give them a free gratis, and then the next person comes in and we charge 50%. I don't agree, I don't think, I'm not willing to support it under that basis. If we're going to, it's going to run in another two months, we're going to start to charge 50%.
There's no residents out there?
All buildings.
All businesses.
Schools. Works under the same offices. John, do you have any take on it?
It's the one area of town that could, that one, I've heard universally from a lot of people that have used that space out there. Town's already invested, trying to help out with lighting, the area over by the Humane Society, and I don't know, I feel since we have this agreement with the police academy in place, it would move us to not piecemeal what's going to go on down there, but we're, that agreement doesn't trigger them until we finish with the lighting and the sidewalk and the curb and gutter for the streets. Since we agreed to that, I'd be, I'd be favoring a wall of this. I do think that it's probably going to have some outside benefits for us in the longer term. Everyone knows, I'm really interested in seeing us develop in the Happy Creek Technology Park in there, and that's going to be the entryway to it eventually. So I think that that's going to be, it's a worthwhile investment for us.
I mean, right now, Progress Drive has no lighting, has some curb and gutter maybe half, and no sidewalk. And the agreement that we had with the academy, once a subdivision came in and put in sidewalk that they would have to attach. If we came in and did Progress Drive, but if we piecemeal it, then they don't have to until it's completed, so. Good point. Gary?
I feel the same way John does when we had it. It's definitely a business, so that we need to invest in a lot of places out there.
I don't agree. I like the concept, but we got a police department, we're going to have, we only have $80,000 in the budget for supervision on site for any construction for the police department. We got a whole lot of other demands for spending a quarter million dollars than just putting in a blank curb and gutter on a site that's not even developed at this point. And it goes back to my original concern. My house sat there without curb and gutter, and I installed it because my neighbors had curb and gutter, so I was the odd person out. So now we're going to start filling in, use a quarter million dollars that we can use on other projects that have real merit right now than that site out there.
Okay. Jacob?
I would have to agree with Bill. I'm not necessarily opposed to doing the sidewalks, I think that's a, I think they need, they need something out there for sure, but my concern has been that we have a couple big ticket items this year that have been, it feels like almost every project that we've started talking about, the cost estimates have come in considerably higher. And so, I think I was discussing with you earlier today, Paul, I still would like to discuss in our budget meeting of, you know, paying for these projects, these additional costs that were not, not projected for this year, and if we can do that and the money's still there, then I'm for delegating it, but I'm not for delegating it, or designating it, rather, immediately after we just are receiving it without even looking at the other things that we're still trying to cover and pay for. And along that line, along those lines, I wanted to say that, you know, we haven't even had a chance to discuss the money coming in from the police station, and it kind of surprised me that I had about six email correspondence related to Progress Drive, related to Progress Drive, and specifically referencing designating the money from the police station to building that before we even talked about it. And I was a little, you know, I was a little bit disappointed about that because we haven't even, again, haven't even received that check, and there's an idea being floated out there to take this money and put it, put it to Progress Drive, very specific campaign that, you know, only would originate from here.
From me. When we were receiving the letters, I had explained to those folks that we didn't have the funds, that we didn't have the funds, but maybe we would have the funds if we sold the police department.
Well, no, but it feels like...
So the advocate that was pushing for sidewalks and curb and gutter in that area, I let him know that we have sold the police department and we would have funds if the council chose to move those funds to that area, so.
All right, well, again, it's one of those that it just kind of feels like it backed you into a corner because we haven't even received that check, and now there's a campaign, very specific campaign to take that money and put it towards Progress Drive, and we had to discuss that amongst council.
I just want to throw it out there because it was, it was, they wanted the sidewalks to be put in at the academy because that would give them more room to walk, and this would complete that, that project.
And I think it's a great idea, I definitely do, and that's what I'm saying, is that I think it's something that should be done, and we need to figure out a way to do that. I just want to make sure that we have the money to actually commit to that and cover our other obligations.
So, you know, we sold the electric department, and that money just went back into general fund?
It's in fund balance?
Yeah, it's back into the fund balance.
Council chooses.
It's not like the money's going to disappear, it'll always be there, but I was just for feeling, you know, they were concerned that we not allowing sidewalks to be put in at the academy was disregarding them out there, that they pay taxes, they pay a lot of taxes, they have a lot of workers dark, and they want to get a little modernized, but I'm hearing three council members tonight, Mr. Morrison's not here, so we'll just can this idea.
Take one. Yeah, I don't think you're saying can it, I think I was saying, I just want to see if we can pay for it.
I think it's worth pointing out as well, when the issue came up from the academy, a lot of, a lot of voters out of Progress Drive mistakenly thought we were discussing whether or not all of Progress Drive was going to have sidewalks and lights. And so there was kind of a letdown, I think, when it was clarified, it's no, it's just the portion of Progress Drive that's not yet constructed, that we get it and everything else would not. So I think everyone understood it made no sense to put sidewalk and lights where people don't walk in favor of, in the area where people do walk. in favor of, and leave the area where people do walk and have their pets and all these, I think there's two different schools in there now, where if all of those students walk, still be laying, which is why we came to the agreement that we did. In the end, we're gonna have to bite the bullet and put in the curb and sidewalk down there. That's, that's a piecemeal solution, a property by property solution's not gonna work. That is gonna be something that the town's ultimately going to occur. I was aware of that when I voted for the compromise that we worked out with the EDA, with the academy.
Mr. Mayor, again, if this thing passes the, the next two weeks, three weeks, whatever it is, then I would suggest that we go down and talk to the property owners there and ask them to share in the fifty-fifty cost. And I'd be a hundred percent in favor of this. And I, and I would, at that time, I would probably consider putting in the electrical lights at the town's expense making. But I just don't think it's fair.
Do we normally do that? I don't understand that part.
We normally don't do that either.
No, we don't normally charge business owners fifty percent?
We have in the past, yeah, they're just like a.
We had it since like two thousand and four.
I mean, before anybody in town, on Main Street or wherever, Jackson Street, I put a mini piece on Jackson Street that the property owners paid for that was a business. And anywhere in town, so I don't see any difference in Progressive Drive or any other regular street in Front Royal. If I gotta pay it as a citizen, then why shouldn't the businesses have to pay their share as much as I do?
Well, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing on that. It's more the fact that essentially, if we are relying entirely on that system to get Progress Drive done, then we're never going to, we, we could potentially have a situation where one property owner prevents the curb, the gutter, and the sidewalk and the lights going in at the police academy. And that's just something we need to be aware of.
We have the hospice going, I don't change the subject, but we have the, we have the approval, and Doug, you can correct me on that, that we have ten property owners wanting, one doesn't, we can still go in and assess that person and put it in, same as we've done anybody else. We've always had that right before, I don't think it's changed.
Oh, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we don't have the right to do it. I'm not saying that at all.
I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna, again, it's like Mr. Seelock. He improved his property, it cost him seventeen thousand. And, you know, again, if, if you got a piece of real estate and you want to improve it, then to behoove any property owner to pay the, the cost to put it in, if it's only gonna be half or less than half of what it cost if it did the whole hundred percent of it. So to me, it's, I think it's a great idea. If I was a property owner, I paid it, paid for mine when I built my new home. And I paid, at that time, when I paid, it was six bucks. Because it's a long time ago. But, but again, no, I think it's, it's, it's something that we can make a prudence to the town at a very little, minimal cost to the property owner as well as the town. It never lets you. That includes Progress Drive.
It still comes back to the very thing. You got one property owner that chooses not to do it and they can hold up. But we, as a town, are still responsible. We're responsible for the streets and the lighting. And there again, you know, here, here we are, talking about vacating one place at the benefit of another. And I, we got too many projects coming up in this, and we need more discussion before we just automatically come up and say, oh, we're gonna spend a quarter million dollars on Progress Drive. There might be some other priorities that are needed in those places.
And I understand that, and I appreciate that. What I'm saying is that regardless of what we decide on this quarter of a million, it's my opinion that we've already committed to putting in sidewalk, curb, and gutter and lights on Progress Drive. Council could never actually follow through on completing that. But if that's the case, then the police academy's not gonna follow through on their end either. And that's just, it's, it's a factor that does impact my decision-making on this issue.
I mean, I agree with John. I mean, I think that it's something that, you know, we have committed to. And it's something that, again, I'm for, I just, I would like to see.
But it doesn't mean that we have to do it now.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
That's, that's, that's a true thing. Like, I'm not disagreeing with anything anyone else here is saying. I'm just saying that is, it is something that weighs bigger in the balance for this remaining than anything else because we have something built into the title for the transference to the academy. And that's something that we, we all voted on to, to make happen. If we forget about it or we don't follow through all the way on it, then that never becomes reality.
So you wanna take one for?
I think we need a whole lot of discussion. I mean, we've got, we've got a discussion period coming up where we're gonna talk about all the major projects within this town. And our goal is, I mean, you've been, you got it on our agenda here. And if I could jump to the gold setting, you know, this is one thing, the Director of Finance took my original spreadsheet and has made a master spreadsheet of all the expenses we got coming up. And I think each councilman, if I could request that the Director of Finance provide them that sheet, what's gonna be our cost going out for the next ten years? You would be appalled of what you're gonna see and what income we actually have coming into this community. And what expenses that we're going to be shown or have to put out going forward, year to year. So I like to make sure that every councilman has that spreadsheet. And it ought to be part of our, Councilman Conley and I discussed months ago about having an updated project list. Now, this spreadsheet does exactly what Councilman Conley and myself discussed months ago. So that should be a living document for us. So we know where we're going. We're looking at all the expenses, be it compensation for employees and updating projects. This ought to be part of the whole picture that we look at. So that would be my recommendation.
Agreed, disagree? John? Right, Joe?
I'm not against sidewalks.
I know you're not.
I'm really for sidewalks.
All right, last but not least, council discussion and goals. Time for meeting, we have time. Bill?
I just want, I just want that document put out.
Anybody else? Seems like that's it. Meeting's adjourned.